Good evening. This July the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Alderman Meeting is hereby called to order. I'd like to ask our pastor from Greater Faith Outreach Ministry to come forward and lead our invocation, please. If you had lecterns, please stand. We'll do the pledge of allegiance after the invocation.
Father, we thank you personally for those for your goodness and faith, God, to the Sodo County, and also especially all of our we thank you for the many ways that you were allowing the city to move forward, allowing the city to grow, God through your destruction and progress and building and everything else. Father, you showed a hand of favor on all of our needs. We thank you for that. Father, we hope you can help. Father, we recognize that we need your wisdom. Father, we need your wisdom to be able to handle business and to be able to handle things the way that you would have us to handle it. Father, we recognize that you are the one who appoints leaders in their position. So, Father, I thank you for each one of these leaders and each one of these officials who you have appointed, God, by your hand to lead the city according to your will. Father, we just ask, Father, that you would be with each one of them, God, as they talk about future plans and future projects and answers questions. Father, pray that you would be able to listen to them and be able to answer them with clarity. God, I pray that God is someone who would do anything not selfish ambition, but always keep the people in the forefront of their lives. Obviously, we do not, I thank you for the many ways that they have displayed humility and everything else so far. Father, we ask that I would be honoring and glorifying you, God, that Jesus would be exalted above all, and he would have the forgiveness of all that's said and done. And, Father, we pray that in all things you would be honoring and glorifying. You would be lifted high inside of the city of all of our needs. God, we thank you. We love you. We praise you. And in your name I pray amen.
Thank you Pastor Graves. Thank you for your service for Emmanuel Baptist Church. Do you want me to pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Stewart, would you conduct roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Aldridge.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Yerhard.
Here.
Gammage.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, all present. So, obviously, we have a quorum established. Board, you have before you the minutes from our regular meeting at July the first meeting. Any questions on those minutes or any motions on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Collins' motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Mayor's update. Board, just have a couple of items for you. We had over six thousand people for the Light the Way Festival on July the fourth, fireworks show as well. About seventy-two hundred people inside the park, eleven spiritual decisions made, and a lot of lives changed, so we're thankful for that. The feedback we received was extremely positive in the fireworks show. Probably has been said before, but it was one of the best we've ever had. But it was a good fireworks show, but we've heard that over and over that it was one of the best, so that's pretty awesome. The city's annual financial audit is in your binder as well in the consent item. Won't go through that. It's a very lengthy book, but it covers FY fiscal year twenty-four, October one, twenty-three to nine thirty, twenty-four. When you get an opportunity, page four gives the financial highlights, and they encapsulated it very well. Said, "Over the past few years, the city of Ollie Branch experienced dramatic growth in economy and in population. But the city is sensitive to national economic trends. The cost of providing quality services, public safety, and infrastructure continues to increase, but the city has managed to maintain an attractive tax rate." And then they talk about eleven years with no millage rate increase. So hats off to the board members here now and the ones that preceded us that made this happen. So, an audit, internal audit, excuse me, external audit is one of those things that is not real flashy, but if it's a bad one, everybody cares, and if it's a good one, not so much happens, but this was a positive one, and we've had positive audits for many, audits many years in a row. So hats off to CFO Jason May and the finance team and all the department heads for managing the funds like they should be managed according to state statutes. We have been able to secure, working with a couple of different organizations, we've been able to secure in two thousand twenty-six, which is really not that far away, been able to secure the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall for our city, which the plan is to have it placed at the George Harrison Soccer Fields. Michael Reed's gonna help me go through the basics, if you will, sir. Come forward. Three hundred and seventy-five feet long or thereabout, and it's quite an item to be seen, and we had to start two years early, but anything else to add to that, Michael, as far as that traveling Vietnam wall?
No. So, last year, you probably saw it come through your city. Somebody dropped out up in Tennessee or somewhere else, and Tennessee picked it up. So, Honor Our Troops Association, you'll probably know it better by the golf tournament that happens every September here in the city. It's happening again in September, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. We'll have the banquet on the twenty-fifth and the golf tournament on the twenty-sixth. But between Honor Our Troops and our local American Legion, we are sponsoring the traveling wall. Technically, it's not supposed to be in this area again because we just had it in Tennessee, but since how they were a fill-in, we applied for it, and as the mayor said, we got it, and it's coming June fourth through the June eighth. It's three hundred and seventy-five foot long with fifty-eight thousand names on it. It is a replica of the one that is in Washington, DC. It gives people the chance to memorialize people that they know, loved ones that they've lost, and family members and things like that, because they may never be able to go to Washington and be able to do it. Last year's wall, like I said, was up off of Lakeland, kind of hidden back off the interstate, and it got well over three thousand people in foot traffic. We expect more than that with where it's going to be on Church Road. It's a very public place, and we're happy to do this. Tentative plans right now, so you guys know, is that if we can do it, we're gonna bring it in, bring it into Bumpus, Harley-Davidson, up in Memphis. Hopefully, we have close to two hundred bikes like we had last year. We stretched out over a mile, mile and a half to bring it in. We borrowed a helicopter from Marshall County to fly over and videotape it, and it's a pretty impressive thing to follow that trailer, and you get a mile and a half worth of motorcycles escorting it, and law enforcement from every different jurisdiction gets involved with it and helps bring it in. And like you said, it's a twenty-four hour a day thing that'll be open to people, that they can come at any time and see their loved one's name on a wall.
And, Board, we're open for input, but we chose that soccer field just due to the high volume of traffic instead of one of the regular parks, because, again, so much traffic through there. We thought it would better serve us to do that. So, if any questions? Well, thank you, Michael, and Tina showed Mr. Michael Reed with the VSO, the Veteran Services Organization. Is that?
Yeah, that's my day job. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for the county. I've been here eight years. I'm over there next to the library in the driver's license place. So, you have any veterans that need anybody or their family, send them over to see me.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
All right, thank you.
And, Board, you also have in your packet the Gene Phillips recognition that's taken place for fifty years of service to Ollie Branch community through funeral services. He began his career in Brantley Funeral Home, May the fifth, nineteen seventy-five, was co-owner from seventy-six to ninety-eight, and has personally served over fifty-one hundred families with funeral services needs. So, congratulations to him for fifty years of service, Mr. Gene Phillips, also known as Mr. Digger Phillips, AKA Digger Phillips, so very impressive. Those are all the items I have for the mayor's update. We do want to... Yes, sir. We do want to say thank you to our Boy Scout troops. Have troop ten and two thirty-four, is that correct? If you will, stand. We'd like to honor your presence from First Cumberland Presbyterian, and thank you for being here tonight with us. Just a reminder for the audience and the elected officials that our meeting is streamed live at the city's YouTube channel and also archived for playback, so please remember that, and also our microphones for those of us who have one. One should be on green when we're speaking so that everyone can hear what we're speaking about. Next item is our consent agenda. Board, any questions on the consent agenda that you have before you? If no questions, any motions to approve the consent agenda? Who's that? Mr. Gammage, motion. Is there a second? Mr. Wallace, second. Correction, Mr. Collins, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent items, you see the planning commission consent items, A, B, and C, and D, before, thank you, A, B, C, and D. Those are individually laid out, Board. Any questions on those where they need to be pulled for more discussion? If not, do you approve planning consent items, A, B, C, and D from the agenda? Motion to approve by Mr. Dickerson. Second, Mr. Wallace, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mostly administrative is what those items are for the scouts that may not be familiar with those items or more administrative in nature and don't need a lot of discussion and question and answers. Item number two, consideration of application for a final plat for Area Nine of Robertson Crossing Commercial Subdivision submitted by Byron Houston, Houston Engineering on behalf of property owners, Pleasant Hill Land and Development Company Incorporated. The request is to subdivide five point seven two plus or minus acres into two commercial lots. The subject property is on PUD, Planned Unit Development, and is located at the southeast corner of Malone Road and Church Road, Church Road East. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Adman. Before you is a request to consider the final plat for Area Nine of the Robinson Crossing subdivision. This is a planned unit development. At the planning commission meeting two months ago, it was initially proposed as a three-lot subdivision as shown before you at the southeast corner of the intersection of Church Road and Malone Road. The lots, as it were proposed two months ago, as I did indicate, you had three lots, two point one eight acres, one point six five, and one point eight nine acres. The area in blue, this was designated on the plat to be for stormwater management, and the area in green, that's a twenty-feet-wide buffer that was required in the project text for Robinson Crossing PUD. The development intent, why you have this plat before you or why it was before the planning commission two months ago, was because the applicant intended to construct a convenience store with fuel pumps and a car wash with the convenience store on Lot One and the car wash on Lot Two. So, this was two months ago. This was a plat as it was submitted to the planning commission. At that particular meeting, it was brought to the attention of the developer that if he wanted to construct a car wash and a convenience store, the Robinson Crossing project text specifies that car washes would be as an accessory to the convenience store. To be accessory, both have to be on the same lot. So, as defined in the zoning regulations of the city and of the Sodo County, an accessory use has to be on the same lot as a principal use, otherwise it's no longer accessory. If it's accessory, then it has to be subordinate to a principal. Once the developer learned that, he requested that an item be tabled for him to change the layout of what he had and put both uses on the same lot, basically. To kind of give you a little bit of a background on why we have this plat before you at this time. In two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Adman made convenience store with fuel pumps conditional uses in the conventional C-one, C-two, C-three zoning districts. With regard to project texts, the regulations simply stated that the use or the location criteria, everything will be as specified in the project text. In two thousand twenty-four, end of last year, the board decided to address plant unit developments, convenience stores and plant unit developments. The board added design criteria, but also made project, named a number of project texts in the city that permitted convenience store with fuel pumps. Those that were permitted as outright, used by right, were all made conditional uses, all of them. They were all made conditional uses on every piece of property, subject to the signalized intersection rule, all of them. But it was also recognized that at the time, they were a number of what was called projects, which were essentially convenience store developments that were already in progress by December seventeen twenty twenty-four. They were in different stage of planning or in different stage of review. In order not to impose regulations that will, you know, upset everything that a particular developer already submitted to the city, those particular projects were granted what was called vested rights. To be able to maintain those rights, the applicant had to meet certain deadlines, do certain things within those deadlines. One of them was that the final plat had to be approved and recorded by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in order for that particular piece of property to remain vested and be able to have a convenience store with gas pumps on it, even if it's not at a signalized intersection. If September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five passes, and a piece of property that was permitted to have a convenience store with gas pumps has not had its plat recorded, that piece of property will lose its rights to proceed without a conditional use permit. In order to move forward, they'll have to go to the BZ and get a conditional use permit, and at that time, they will not meet the new regulations, basically. So, this particular applicant, this application is before you because the applicant is trying to get the plat recorded to meet this deadline. This is really the reason this application is before you. Secondly, placing the convenience store and car wash on the same lot will require a larger lot, as I had mentioned. For this reason, last week, the applicant revised the plat, took it back before the planning commission, changed from a three-lot subdivision design to a two-lot subdivision design, as you have before you. The project text had conceptualized, this is to your right, the picture you have to the right of your screen. That is what you had in the conceptualized preliminary plat layout of this particular Area Nine in the Robinson Crossing project text. It had conceptualized three lots, with these two smaller lots at the corner, at the top corner. What you have before you are two lots, Propose Lot One, which is larger, and then Propose Lot Two in the area that had the kind of, you had a building rubbing to the east and to the south of the smaller lots. One thing to note was, this particular Area Nine, back in the nineteen, early two thousands, when this project text was drawn, did not account for stormwater management. For example, there is no area in this, on this Area Nine for stormwater management. So, the plat you have before you now has that blue area that is provided for regional stormwater management. The areas in gray, those are cross-access easements to be used by the owners of both Lot One and Lot Two, and also to provide access to the stormwater management area at the rear of the property. You still have the area in green that is intended to provide a twenty-feet-wide buffer that was required in the project text. This is the plat, so you have the thirty-six feet easements. This is not really shown on this plat, but the project text for Robinson Crossing, there were actually three points of access to Church Road and one point of access onto Malone Road. The plat as currently drawn, you have two points of access to Church Road instead of three, which is better, because you always want to reduce those points of conflict, and then one point of access onto Malone Road, which was already approved in the project text for the property. The scope of review for subdivision plats is pretty narrow. The application before the board is not about the specific potential use of a lot. It's not about a convenience store with fuel pumps or with car wash. That's not what this application is about. The application before the board is strictly about the division of those lots. It has nothing to do with a particular use. As a matter of fact, it's not uncommon for developers to have, or property owners to have an ongoing, maybe put a property on their contract, plot the property, then the contract doesn't go through, and you have entirely different use on that piece of property. That's not uncommon. So, the use of the property is really not the issue on that discussion as far as this plat is concerned. In other words, the future land use of the proposed lots pursuant to approved zoning cannot be the basis to deny the subdivision plat of this property or any other subdivision plat. Once property is divided, any use that zoning permits on that property is permitted on the property, any use that zoning permits. Subdivision plats really address two main things. The first, where you have available and sufficient subdivision infrastructure, such as roads, utilities, stormwater management, are those infrastructure available to service those lots? If they are not, who is going to provide them? Usually, it's a developer. In some cases, you may have an agreement with the city on how they're going to be provided. That's the first thing that subdivision address. The second is, how are these lots partitioned? That's basically the two main things. And when you have a project text or a PUD scenario, how the partitioning of the lots therefore has to comply with the project text and associated preliminary development plan for Robinson Crossing. With regard to the availability and sufficiency of subdivision infrastructure, there is water. You have water lines shown here in blue, eight-inch, twelve-inch, available to both lots on this intersection. You have a gas line there in yellow, the line shown there in green, those are seawall lines. Church Road is a five-lane road. It has sufficient capacity transportation-wise. Malone Road, especially with the plan that the city, county has on extending that road to the south, this is basically a collector and an arterial street. It's not really a local street. So, from an infrastructure perspective, the infrastructure is sufficient for the proposed development. As I did indicate, the project text was approved for three driveway points going onto Church Road, but what is proposed before you will be two points, which is better, because it's actually reducing points of conflict on Church Road. You also had Malone Road, access onto Malone Road that is being maintained on this plat. With regard to architectural elements, the project text called for a twenty-feet-wide buffer between the commercial lots and the residential lots to the south. That buffer is supposed to have a six-feet-high wooden fence. So, that's what we have to enforce on any development on this particular piece of property, because that's what the developer was required by the county. This was approved in the county before the city annexed a couple of years ago, annexed this piece of property a couple of years ago. So, the project text, the subdivision plat you have before you incorporate these design elements. The subdivision regulations require that the plat should comply with the subdivision regulations of the city in order to be approved. If it meets the subdivision regulations, it's simply ministeria. It needs to be approved. For plant unit developments, approved master plans, as outlined, they constitute sufficient preliminary plat approval. So, you don't need another preliminary plat. That's why this is being done as a fine. That's why this is being done as a final. The final plat should conform substantially with the preliminary plat, that's what subdivision regulations say. The subdivision regulations also say, state that the basic purpose of a PUD is to allow flexibility in the development of plant communities. That's very important, because what you have in the project text are these two small zero point four acres conceptualized lots. The subdivision regulations recognize that for PUDs, there will be an element of flexibility once you have a developer in place, actually needing a particular size of lot to build. What controls, in terms of conformity, whether these lots conform, the key element in defi, in, in defining or determining conformity is whether it meets the legal requirements prescribed in the project text. If it is illegal, then it conforms, basically, everything can stop there if it is illegal. The bulk requirements control the size of lots. The project text for Robinson Crossing with respect to bulk requirements states that areas are designated with a reference district, referring to zoning districts in the DeSoto County zoning regulations. Minimum lot areas, so your minimum lot size shall be as defined in the zoning regulations of DeSoto County as applicable to the reference district for the particular parcel in question. The reference district here is the C four. In the DeSoto County zoning regulations, there is a minimum lot area requirement. That minimum lot area is twenty thousand square feet. There is no maximum lot size requirement. What this basically means is, your lot sizes as proposed have to be minimum twenty thousand square feet, but there's no maximum. So if they are less than twenty thousand square feet, then they do not conform, you have to deny. If they are at least twenty thousand square feet, then they conform. And what is proposed before you is at least twenty thousand square feet. The city has historically, when it comes to commercial areas, interpreted and applied this element of flexibility for commercial areas consistently. If you take the acre PD that's currently under construction, for example, at this intersection of Hamilton Circle and James Herbert Drive, you had these two lots that were conceptualized in the project text to be one point three seven acres and one point one zero acres. If you look at what the city approved in the project, in the final plat, those lots are, that lot there is two point six nine acres, quite larger than the one point, than the one point three seven that was proposed. So as far as the history, the practice of how we have interpreted these regulations or PDs in the city, there is always this element of flexibility in, in commercial areas. You go to Fairhaven subdivision, this is another PD, commercial area C four across from Flying J. These two lots here, this was a conceptualized on the preliminary plat to be one point five acres, one point five acres, the final plat has that as two point one three acres, and that was approved. This is the application of the flexibility element that I was talking about. When the planning commission considered this application at its meeting on July eighth, it had three alternatives before it. First, to find that the plat substantially conformed with, the final plat substantially conformed with the project text provisions for Robinson Crossing, if so found, to recommend approver to the board subject to these conditions one to six. Condition number two, emphasizing the need for the applicant to submit CC arrows that address building architecture, including materials, colors, and all of that signage before recording of the plat. If the planning commission did not find that it conformed, then it could recommend denial. Or you could ask the applicant to table the application again and submit a project text amendment to align with the proposed, uh, final plat. The planning commission found that the proposed subdivision conforms substantially with the project text, based on the elements of flexibility, based on the element of historical practice, on how we have applied these lot sizes, based on the fact that legally you only have a minimum lot size requirement in that area, not a maximum lot size, and the lots are at least twenty thousand square feet. The planning commission unanimously recommended approver subject to these conditions one to six. That concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Song. Board, any questions regarding the staff report? Is the applicant or applicants representative here?
Good evening, I'm Shane King. Uh, Byron actually doubled booked tonight, but I, I was the, uh, his engineering intern that drew these plats.
If you will, Shane, would you give the clerk your home address so she'll have it for record?
Twelve oh seven Office Park Drive, Oxford, Mississippi.
Thank you.
Um, so like I was saying, uh, I was the engineering intern that dealt with these plats, uh, back and forth addressing comments and, uh, like, uh, like a song said, this, we believe it is in conformity with the PUD, the PUD. Um, we are reducing the access points along Church Road, and we are shifting, you know, at first we had three lots going, you know, north to south, and when we got the comment about we need to be more in conformance with the PUD, the solution was to combine the two lots based on an accessory use that needed to be connected to that one lot. So we combined lots one and two and shifted that southern boundary line up to follow along the center line of that shared access that connects all three lots going east to west. And so that was where we ended up with the two point six acres on lot one, and then the three point one two acres with lot two. And, uh, the, all the utilities are in place. We have a sanitary sewer manhole just on the southwest corner of the lots. We are going to extend that sewer line up and across, uh, to serve both lots. There's twelve inch water main going along the east side of Malone, and, uh, obviously power and gas are available. And, uh, we are proposing this detention easement, shared detention, because we're going to outfall to the east side of the property. And so that easement is going to allow for the stormwater detention pond itself, as well as our conveyance pipes that are going to drain to the east along that center line of the eastern boundary. And, um, yes, uh, it's hard to follow a song, he hits all the points. So, uh, I, I just appreciate y'all hearing us tonight, and, uh, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, board. Any questions from engineering, or for engineering, rather?
Mayor, I did have one question I'd like for clarity, whether engineering or staff addresses it, because I see the access points again, please, to end of the lots. I was a little confused on where they were going to be. I know we're eliminating one. So you'll have one in the proposed lot two, and then one in the center of lot one, is that correct? If I see that right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's far enough away from Malone Road, e, e, even further wouldn't hurt my feelings, but that's, that's been thought out at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earhart. Any additional questions? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Does the applicant have anything to add that has not been covered?
Good evening, Barry Bridgeforth, Jr., fifty-two ninety-three Getwell, South Haven. Um, we have, uh, we've conferred with staff and some of the residents over some of their concerns. We don't have anything to add to, um, the, the plat that we've submitted here tonight, but we are working with staff on trying to address some other issues, and we expect to be coming back before, uh, the board to, uh, to discuss those things. And if, if y'all had any questions about the application or that, I'll be glad to, to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeforth. Any, any questions, board? Thank you. Questions or motions?
Mayor, I would like to say that, uh, I have followed the process that this issue's gone through for several weeks now. I know there've been many hours of meetings and talks and discussions. I want to thank those that have worked really many hours, many, uh, days trying to figure out the best option for this and to understand it. I want to thank our planning department, I think that they did a great outreach to the public. And I know that there were some difficulties on both sides, and as this moves forward, I just hope that, um, many of the issues can be finalized that will be satisfying to both parties. But tonight's vote is only to approve the subdivision plat. So therefore, since the subdivision plat meets legally, meets the city requirements, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Motion to approve by Ms. Hamilton, is there a second? Second, Ms. Aldrich, any additional questions or discussions?
Mayor, I just have one point, and that would be a motion to approve with a second by Aldrich, motion by Hamilton, and that's to approve as presented with the six, a song is in six conditions, with the six conditions of approval. Okay.
Is that correct? Okay, very good. Motion and second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please, would be consideration of application for a preliminary plat for Highland Lake subdivision submitted by Nick Croon and Civil Link on behalf of property owner Bryant Cashin, FSB and Company LLC. The request is to subdivide six point nine four plus or minus acres into twenty residential lots and two common open spaces. The subject property is zone R three planned residential district and is on the west side of Highway three oh five, just north of College Road known as four two two five, Highway three oh five. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. On your, uh, screen, you can see the location of the subject property. It's, uh, just under seven acres in size. It is located on the west side of Highway three oh five, or about nine hundred feet to the north of, uh, College Road, which is located here. And the proposal that you have before you is to subdivide the six point nine four acres into twenty single family residential lots and two common open spaces. And that shows a depiction of the proposed subdivision of that acreage. The property was rezoned back in twenty twenty-two to the, uh, planned residential district, and at that same time, the Highland Lake master plan and project text was adopted. Now, following the adoption of that project text and master plan for Highland Lake, what happened is you subsequently approved a rezoning and a separate project text and development plan for Old River Farm, and Old River Farm since that time surpassed Highland Lake because they went ahead and moved on to the platting process, preliminary and final plats, and Highland Lake, the, uh, I'm sorry, the Old River Farm development is located all along what you see in those green lot lines, and then also to the south of the subject property. And right now, as it stands in, um, in that development, we have six or seven homes that are currently under construction located due to the west of the, uh, subject property for tonight's hearing. So what's shown on this next slide on the top of your screen is the master plan that you approved back in twenty twenty-two for the Highland Lake project. And part of that master plan, you had alternative methods for ingress egress. Again, this preceded the, uh, subsequent, uh, project called Old River Farm, so we weren't aware at that particular time that there would be an Old River Farm. But you can see back, that what was approved back in twenty twenty-two had twenty single family lots on it, average lot size of just under seventy-five hundred square feet. Now, this was originally proposed to be in a gated community. There were gates that were proposed here, and then we had a later iteration where this had an exit driveway into the, um, other development located, uh, to the west. And you can see on this concept plan that you had a walking trail system that was located around the project and back up here in a large common open area. You can see our road configuration went around a big lake that's currently on the property and then sloped back down. So what you have before you tonight is shown on the bottom slide there, and you can see this is the preliminary plat that you're deciding on tonight, and you can see that configuration of the road system follows the same way as it was on the, uh, master plan back in twenty twenty-two. Now, one major difference between what you had, what you approved back in twenty twenty-two versus what you have before you tonight is this, this proposes that these would be public streets. So no longer is a gated private street community, uh, shown. It's basically same lot size, same number of lots, same lot configuration, same road configuration, except this is proposing there wouldn't be any gates or private streets. And as a result of that, you know, in a, in a public street system, you have sidewalks on each side of the road, so that allowed them to remove those trails that were located on the north and south side here on this part of the project. And instead, you'd have sidewalks there, and that allowed them to make the lots a little bit larger than they were originally. They've increased by about four hundred square feet or so on average. And we still do have a walking trail system. So what this slide shows you is the two entrance locations. Now, this is the one along Highway three oh five, and that was already built, and that's been constructed by the developer of Old River Farm. And you can see we have a right in, right out, and so what we have is Old River Farm on the south side of that, and then Highland Lake would be on the north side. So as it stands, that road is stubbed out to the Highland Lake project, and all of the Highway three oh five improvements have been completed. And this shows the driveway on the, uh, opposite side of the project, we're over on the west side of the project, and this is within a public right of way, and this drive was constructed in the public right of way by the developer of Old River Farm. And so originally, this was intended to be an exit route only, so go back one slide. So originally, that was supposed to come through here and be exit only. So now it's proposed to be converted into a two-way street, and within that public right of way, it would be, um, it would be completed. And so this shows you a picture looking eastbound of what's been constructed. You'd have the south side on that side of the road. Again, we're looking in a easterly direction. And so we would ask the developer, this time of Highland Lake, to come in and make these improvements. And what they would be doing is they'd have to widen that road out, so it had thirty feet of pavement section as opposed to, I believe it's eighteen feet now, so it could handle two-way traffic. And then there would also be a requirement to construct, construct a sidewalk on the southern side of the, uh, right of way. This right of way was only forty feet in width in anticipation, it was just going to be a private drive, so you really don't have enough room there to be able to put sidewalks on both sides of the road. Now, on the next slide that I'm showing, this shows you, this is again part of the Highland Lake project, so you can see completion of that sidewalk along just the south side of the road, coming up this way around the, uh, lake, and then you have it looping around back into this, um, large common open space up at the northwest corner of the project. So what's shown in blue, these would be the improvements that the developer would have to make at the time that the subdivision infrastructure was installed, and that's what's shown in red is the remainder of the sidewalk system that would be built as the houses would be built. And also as part of the recommended conditions, and this dates back to when the, uh, project text was approved back in twenty twenty-two, a developer improvement would be to erect a six-foot-high fence all the way along the northern property line of the project. And again, this would be done at the time of subdivision infrastructure installation. It wouldn't be done as homes were built, that fence would be there before the homes would essentially be built. And what's shown on this bottom slide is the, uh, cross-section of the right of way that's on your preliminary plat. Again, we have thirty feet of asphalt from inside of curb to inside a curb, and then you've got the sidewalks on each side of that. The planning commission reviewed this application at its meeting on July eighth, and by unanimous five to zero margin, did pass a motion recommending approval of the final plat for, I'm sorry, that should be preliminary plat for the Highland Lake subdivision, subject to the following conditions, um, one through fourteen. Again, number two just reiterates that you'd have to have that six-foot-high, uh, cedar fence installed along the northern boundary as part of infrastructure installation. And then when they did get to the final plat submittal, as noted under number three, now these were items that were set back- now, these were items that were set back when, in 2022, when you approved the project text, you did a minimum house size of 2,000 square feet. So we'd have to follow through with that on their, on their final declaration. And you also had a two-thirds brick or masonry requirement, uniform mailbox requirement. And again, those, this would come back to you in its final platform after the infrastructure was installed. And then this, number four, deals with that cross-connection that I talked about from the one project over to the other, where it basically requires them to go off their site and improve that 18-foot drive to widen it out and add a sidewalk. And then number six, just reiterates that circulation plan that I showed you with the red and the blue lines. And what's down on number 13 just talks about that Highland Drive, again, being constructed to our local street standards, so we can make sure that we've got appropriate access for all types of vehicles. That concludes the staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Board, any questions regarding the staff report?
I've got one. Mr. Gamble, where the widen of the, to make it 30 foot?
Yes, sir.
Is the developer, this developer is going to be required to make that improvement, correct?
Yes, sir.
If it's, is it a part of the other development's property, or is it just in the right-of-way?
Well, when they, when they platted the property, they platted it as public right-of-way. So when you do a subdivision plat, every piece of property either becomes part of a lot or public right-of-way or common open space. So in this case, when the developer of Old River Farm built that driveway, they decided to dedicate that as public right-of-way.
So there's no issue with the property?
It's the city. No, sir, there's no issue with, with, we would require, you know, again, the developer of Highland Lake to go within that public right-of-way, which is basically city-owned property, and widen out that road and add the sidewalk.
And then basically, the, other than the, it's not much of a change from the original approval outside of the gated community and, and the sidewalk changing from a walking trail to a sidewalk on both sides of the street, generally speaking.
Yes, sir, I'd agree with that. There's really no, you can see the two pictures, concept plan on the top with your PUD, and then you can see the plat on the bottom. So it's basically the same thing with those two changes that you just discussed.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gamble, let me ask you this, if I might. The sidewalks as constructed, when they loop into common open space 22, will that be concrete as well?
I don't think that we've gotten to that point yet. At, at the point when this, assuming if this were to be approved tonight, the next subsequent step in the process is that they would provide civil site plans to our city engineering department for review. So at that time, you know, they would spec out what that material would be made of at the point that they, they provide those plans.
And also, who would be responsible for upkeep on that sidewalk, depending on?
If it's on a common open space, it would definitely be the responsibility of the-
HOA.
HOA, yes, sir.
As implied in item number five.
Yes, sir. And the HOA would also be responsible for the upkeep of the fence that would be put along the northern property line.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The standard sidewalk, if the city would maintain, correct?
Yes, if I could go back to that drawing. So, yes, sir, if, if the sidewalk's in the, in the public right-of-way, it would be the responsibility of the city to maintain it. So really, probably everything, you know, that's shown in red, and then this, this sidewalk too, along the southern part, would eventually, that'd all be in the public right-of-way, so that would be city. But when you veered off of the road between these two lots and then looped around, that would be in the common open space. So that section of the sidewalk would be the responsibility of the homeowners' association.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Hearing none. Is the applicant here? Applicant's not present. Any additional questions or motions?
I'm looking most to approve since it's not as very approved.
Mr. Wallace, motion to approve. As presented. Mr. Wallace, motion to approve as presented. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Dickerson. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item four, consideration of application for a final plat for Eagle Commercial Subdivision, lots four and five submitted by Bob Farley, Farley Surveying LLC on behalf of Eagle Land LLC, property owner. The request is to subdivide 6.41 plus and minus acres into two lots. The subject property is Zoned C2 Highway Commercial District and is located on the west side of Hax Cross Road, just south of the Burlington Northern Railroad track and highway, and north of Highway 178. Report, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. This 6.14 acre subject property, again, we're located on the west side of Hax Cross Road, and we are just to the south of the BNSF railroad line, which runs right through here. The proposal is to subdivide this property into two commercial lots. Lot four would be just under three acres, and lot five would be three and a half acres in size. What's prompting this application to plat the property and the development intent for the property is currently at Zone C2, as I mentioned. But on May 8th of 2025, the city's Board of Zoning Adjustment granted a conditional use permit to develop what's proposed to be Lot Five with the use called wholesale plumbing supply. They're currently located out on Highway 178, and they plan to develop and move to this site, that they're going to have some form of screened outdoor storage there. So that required a conditional use permit, and the Board of Adjustment did in fact grant that. So when you, after the conditional use permit, their next step in development, once they establish that use, is to subdivide or plat the property, and that's what you have before you tonight. There's no development that's currently proposed for Lot Four. So when you look at what the infrastructure requirements would be for this particular property, we have the needs-based storage building that's existing development that's on Lot Three to the south, and you can see in front of that, there was a requirement for a cross-access easement, and we have a road, a private driveway that runs along parallel to Hax Cross Road. And on the west side of that, we have a internal sidewalk that serves all of those lots. So the idea here would be as part of this subdivision plat, they would be extending that driveway and sidewalk northward through newly-established easement across Lot Four and onto Lot Five. And there would be an access point over here where there's an existing driveway apron that's just south of the railroad tracks. As far as the utilities go with this subdivision, they're already in place. We do have water lines shown in blue and gas lines shown in yellow in the Hax Cross right-of-way. And this is a little bit different. We do have the sewer, in this case, along the rear of the property. And I'll see if that little green symbol, that stands for pump station, that's running behind the needs-based storage. And so you have a sewer easement that's proposed along the back of these lots that would run sewer line to service Lot Five and also Lot Four. Planning Commission reviewed this item at its July 8th meeting, and they did recommend approval of the final plat for these two lots, subject to the seven conditions as noted. They're basically standard conditions. I would note, one deviation to that is that we're adding in that only one connection would be permitted for lots four and five out to Hax Cross Road, so they don't each get their separate access point. And that's a little bit of an addition versus when it went to the Planning Commission. That concludes the staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Any questions? I'll just add kudos to the board for whenever 5281 was approved. I can't remember which board member, but some of you required that cross-connect street. And I remember the developer at the time asking to be relieved of that duty, but this is a prime example of exactly why it's needed for future development. So it just, it took a few years, but it did what it was supposed to do.
Yes, sir, that's also extended to the south on some of the other lots in the subdivision. Farther to the south, that requirement will be in place. So basically, I think it's been the board's position to always connect those parking lots. So I think it's good planning, really, they can, you know, a driver can get off of Hax Cross at an access point and then be able to use the internal driveway system. And supposedly, farther to the south, you have some restaurants and things like that, so there'll be good internal cross-connections, so.
Keeps the traffic off of Hax Cross Road. Any questions? Is the applicant present? Some questions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Collins, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Earhart. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item five, public hearing date for consideration and action on motion declaring the condition of the following properties to be amendments to the public health and safety and directing either the city staff or contract labor to clean the property forthwith. Staff?
Yes, sir. So on your screen, in what came out in your memos, you had two different lists that came out, and we advertised for this public hearing 15 days in advance of the, of the hearing date. So some of these get cut by the time we do the memo and send it out to you in preparation of the agenda. So everything that's shown on this list A has already been mowed or cleaned. And so I'll go through the ones on list B. We have six properties, and these were the ones that, as of the distribution point of the memo, had not yet been addressed. And the condition of these properties, the ones I'll go through at first, have not changed. This is 6161 Humphrey Boulevard. This is to the west of Highway 305, north of Sandage Road, and you can see the condition of the property is pretty bad and overgrown. This is Sing Property, located right down Highway 178. We've got the car wash here, convenience store here, the property in between is quite overgrown. And this is also Sing Property, two lots that are in the triangular piece that's bounded by 178 Sandage and Magnolia Drive. You can see the pictures there, it's not been mowed. And this final one is located in the Brayborn subdivision. This is Highway 302, White Hawk Crossing. And again, you can see, as of today, the property status hasn't changed. This final one at the point, your packet was distributed. This is 9846 Alexander's Ridge Drive. This is Alexander Road over here. This property's to the west. It's kind of up there behind Tractor Supply Company. And so as of the date, we put it on, sent your packet out. You could see the grass was pretty high, but earlier today, our code officers went out, and this one was mowed. So there's really no need for action on that. So we would ask that you would just find the five properties that are listed there still in yellow to be in violation.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Any questions on these lots or motions? Is there anybody, property owner associated with these lots present? Questions or motions?
Mayor, I make a motion that we take this, list B, the five properties in list B.
Thank you.
To take action on those.
Thank you. Mr. Gammage, motion to take action on these five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Old Business, consideration of bids opened on June the 9th, 2025 for the Olive Branch Fire Station Number Six. It was tabled on July 1 for this meeting tonight, excuse me, it's tabled on July 1 and on June the 17th for this particular meeting. I believe that the bids have been reviewed and evaluated, and any concerns resolved. You see the low bid, W&amp;T Contracting Corporation, $5,598,500 for Fire Station Number Six. Mr. May, anything to add, other than at or under budget? That was planned?
Under budget and the recommendation is awarded below their budget.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace, motion to accept the bid. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Aldrich. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration of bids opened on May the 12th, 2025 for the AvGas Aviation Gas Fuel Storage Project, bid amount of $291,829.45. Mr. May, I believe this is used as part of a grant opportunity, is that right? Was this part of a grant opportunity for this amount?
Yes, sir, this is a part of a federal BIL grant through FAA.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wallace, motion to approve. Second, Ms. Hamilton. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item three, consideration of resolution, finding that the resolution of intent to issue general obligation bonds not to exceed $10 million was duly published as required by law, and that no written protest or objection against the issuance has been filed by qualified electors of the city and declaring the necessity and authority for the issuance of such general obligation bonds.
Mayor, board, this is just the next step in our process to issue general obligation bonds. The first step, of course, is the resolution of intent. You advertise that in the paper. Next step is a no protest resolution. The protest, of course, is received with respect to the issuance of the bonds. There'll be at least two more steps come back before you where we actually authorize and direct the issuance and then award in a competitive process. The next step is the no protest resolution that's in your packet tonight, and I recommend, Mr. May recommends, that this resolution be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Di. Any questions, board?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Dickerson, motion to approve resolution. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Second, Mr. Gammage. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. New Business, consideration of accepting and approving the annual audit for fiscal year ending September 30, 2024. That was the audit board that I gave a brief summary on. It's a lot thicker audit in your, in your binder, but another very positive audit with no issues. Is there a motion to accept that annual audit? Mr. Collins, motion to accept. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Earhart. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of recommendation to change order number two on, on contract with Onscore LLC, extending the contract time by 60 days, making the new project completion date September the 23rd, 2025, for the project referred to as the South Area One Water and Sewer Project. In summary, weather delays, rain delays, and some locate delays. Is that correct, Mr. Swims? And just another 60 days needed?
Yes, sir. We've had, we had several different delays. Utilities were one of the strongest delays that we've had, and weather was also a factor. So we're, we're asking to approve this extension of 60 days to finish South One.
Does this change to, or we have another, some more to go?
There will be more to go, both south of town and east of town. That's correct. I believe we have south two and east one and two that are, that are already underway.
Four, four areas with total eight sections, I think, in them. But this would get us close to halfway?
We're probably more than halfway, because we, some of the projects we've got, we're going to move a little bit faster on the tail end because they've got less homes and issues to deal with. So we're doing pretty good.
It is a massive undertaking. It really is. Mr. Wallace, motion to grant the 60-day extension. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Aldrich. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of health, dental, and vision insurance proposals for our fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Board has that information, and I believe representatives of, are here tonight, if you have any questions. you have any questions. Representative of Insurance Consulting Group Incorporated, our agent of record, are here tonight if you have questions.
Mayor, we'll still be picking up 100% of employee costs, right?
100% of employees, 60% dependent. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor, if there's no further questions, I'd like to commend Steve Rogers and his group for their hard work, because it was quite a task that you, appreciate you working that for us and keeping those costs down best that you could. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Earhart, motion to approve. Ms. Hamilton, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ISG, ICG for being with us tonight. I think that's it. I'll get the acronym right, but thank you. Number four, consideration of recommendation authorizing a design variance request to MDOT for a reduction in crossover spacing, outside shoulder width, landed width, and raised median width. And this is for the plan for Pleasant Hill?
Yes, sir, that, it's actually not landed width, it's lane width, but all of these, all of these-
We have an airport too, Mr. Swims. But we want lane. We don't want to land on Pleasant Hill.
Right. All, all of these, you've seen before at the public meeting, they're just, got to the point now where we're proposing them to MDOT. They just need concurrence from City of Olive Branch for the design variances.
And some of these changes were due to the public input in the meeting that was held, is that correct?
Um, yes, they were. Because we did make some adjustments in median widths that were requested, I think, by the public and, but the majority of them have been in, have been in the plan for some time now.
And before we go to a final draft, and there'll be a more formal public meeting held?
Right. We're expecting to hopefully have, have a public hearing sometime in September or, every time I've talked to MDOT, we've delayed it a little bit, but we're, we're shooting for September now for a public hearing on the matter.
Thank you. So this is, you're asking the board to approve this design variance request?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the variance request?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dixon, motion. Mr. Wallace, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to leave record, record session with the intention of going in executive session for items one through five?
So moved.
Mr. Collins, motion.
Second.
Second, Ms. Aldrich. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters in the police department, personnel matter in the dispatch department, personnel matters in the fire department, personnel matter in the street department, and pending or potential litigation? Is there a motion to go into executive session for those five items?
So moved.
Mr. Earhart, motion. Mr. Wallace, is that right? Mr. Wallace, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're in executive session. I probably should have done this first, but do the scouts have any questions about anything that took place tonight? We appreciate you being with us. I should have asked you that earlier. If you have a hard question, give it to a board member. If it's easy, I'll take it. Well, thank y'all for being with us tonight.
Very attentive crew.